Vice President Daley, Acting President Daley.
Here.
Trustee Henderson?
Here.
Trustee Champer?
Here.
And Trustee Schwartz and President Kurtow are absent.
Trustee Schwartz will be here late.
Okay.
So he will be here. Okay, good. So, do you need?
I was looking for the Frost Valley trip meeting. It's in room 104 upstairs.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming. We are here on limited technology today. We have a -- we had power outages at the school, so we are sans Wi-Fi. So our presentations may be a little bit less glamorous than usual, but we'll see what we can do. Just a few things to tell everybody about. We -- Haldane was ranked number 59 in the New York State Most Challenging Schools, which is a report that the Washington Post puts out. It's a huge accomplishment. From my understanding, it is -- it's about how college -- how many college-level tests are given based on how many students there are. So it's a big accomplishment, number 59. And the other thing I wanted to share is that the Haldane School Foundation had a really successful event at Glenwood, and they raised $22,000, which is pretty amazing. They do amazing work. If you couldn't attend, but you really want to give some money, I'm sure they'll take it. Haldaneschoolfoundation.org. So we thank them for a great event. And yeah, it was really fun, too. And I am here acting as a -- acting in Joe Kurtow's stead. He is absent today, but in general, he is stepping out of his presidential role, and I'm assuming that the reins in the interim. That's why I'm here. Okay, so with that, we're going to have a very special presentation from Ann Dineo on the budget. I don't know if, Diana, you want to begin?
Yeah, I'm -- do you have it up there? And we apologize that we're not going to be able to present it, so you can see it on the video. But we're going low-tech tonight, and a lot of what we're going to share tonight was already part of our discussion, but this is going to kind of culminate the understanding of the budget process. I'll quickly go over the program and the staffing that will come into the Haldane School District if the budget goes through. And then Ann will talk about some of the financial pieces that are related to it. So once again, and without going into great detail, because I've done this a number of times, but if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Some of the educational enhancements that we had this -- or that hopefully were in the budget and hopefully we'll see part of next year. We've increased the number, the amount of staff development, the financial numbers in the budget, so we can continue to educate our teachers and move them into the directions that's related to the strategic plan. We have two new technology-related positions that are going to come into the district. Most of the funding for these positions actually came from rearranging and repurposing funds that were already in the budget. We will have a discover, create, and innovate teacher that will work out of our maker space and also will be a co-teacher for K-12 innovation throughout the district. And we are also looking at a technology integration specialist who will help us move forward and integrate the areas of technology that we have begun to look at. Things like Google Classroom, Google Docs, and a Google platform we'll see next year, along with many other things that we hope to have. We're increasing the level of literacy support for our younger students. We are at the magic number right now, the 64 in kindergarten. So we're going to have to start looking at what percentage of the literacy specialists will be dedicated to the kindergarten class and what percentage will be in grades one and two as well. But as we start moving past 66, we know that we have to add a little bit more time into the kindergarten since the numbers were kind of at that sweet level. So we also have -- we're looking at the potential of bringing in a part-time, two periods of a CTE program at the middle school, high school. And this will capture the attention and hopefully capture the interest of a number of students who may like to move into the CTE realm next year. At this point, we still have the SPO in the budget. We have educational opportunities in science and home and careers at the high school level, new electives that are coming through. We're looking for extracurricular support and three new extracurricular opportunities for our students, Model UN Pathways for Success and Roar. We also have some funds available if the numbers in our sports program continue to be high and we need additional support from our coaching staff. So that's where we are. Again, we are looking at minimal increases, repurposing within the budget, and a lot of smart spending. So, this is Dineo.
Okay. So, yes. All right. If you are watching this and can get on Board Docs or on the Haldane website, this presentation that you would have been seeing on our screen over here is out there. So I'll try to direct you to which slide we're talking about, and then, you know, you can match up what I'm saying with the presentation that you would see on your screen at home. So obviously, the first slide would have been the title slide. Dr. Bowers just reviewed slides two and three of the presentation. Those are the educational enhancements. The fourth slide is a revenue recap. Now, this is the three-part budget that we are required by law to present tonight at this time, two weeks before the budget vote. There's a lot of information in this budget document. It's the budget presented in three parts, which I'll go over in a little while. There is a table of contents. This entire document is on Board Docs. It's also on our website. There's three files that make up this because I couldn't scan it all into one file. It's too big of a file. So when you see, it's going to be one of three, two of three, three of three, and it makes up this entire document. This document is also available at the Butterfield Library and at every school building and the district office. There's a copy for you to look at. If you want a copy, you can call up, and I'll make a copy. We don't make a lot of them anymore because they are available two places online. So...
So, Ann, if I could also share that we have a budget newsletter that is in its final stages. It's presently being printed, and that will be coming to you as well with the three-part budget if you do not wish the entire thing, just some additional information.
Okay. So, again, I said I was going to talk about revenues. Page three to five of this budget document describes our revenue projections for 1516. There's a narrative, like a description, a written description. There's also on page five are is the budget for 1415, the projected revenues for the year, and then our revenue budget for 1516. That spells out to you how much we anticipate collecting in taxes. By the way, we will be at the tax cap levy limit for 1516. That's what's anticipated. That is the portion that will require a simple majority to pass. There's another section of revenue other than state aid, which isn't a lot except for our tuition is the biggest item in that category. Another section on page five is the revenue that we anticipate from state aid, and that was that much awaited information that we got on April 1st. Also, just to let you know, that the tax rate that we talk about is an anticipated tax rate. We don't know what the assessments are for the year. We don't know that until August. So anything that we're talking about as far as a tax rate projection is just a forecast, and it's an estimate. It's not -- the tax levy is what I can tell you that we're going to hit. But again, the tax rate depends on the amount of assessment in Cold Spring. And there's a small portion in Putt Valley and a small portion in Fischgill, which is in Duchess County. So the next slide -- sorry, I have to keep signing on. The next slide is Slide 5, and that gives you our spending plan details. That information is going to appear on page 31 of this document. Now, on page 31, it's a little pie chart here, and it tells you that 11% of our budget is administrative, 14% is capital, and 75% is program. I'll get into that in a little while. But this bottom part is what would be on Slide 5, and that's letting you know that the budget increase is $473,837. That's a 2.11% increase over the 1415 budget. Slide 6 is this little pie chart. So you'll be able to see that in living color when we finally can see that online. Now, the three-part budget that I was talking about earlier is what we need to present to you tonight. 11% is administrative, and basically, that includes the salaries and benefits of administrators, administrative clerical staff, school board costs, tax collection, legal and auditing costs, BOSI's administrative costs, and central data processing. So those are all of the non-program parts of the budget that is support to keep the school running. Except for operations and maintenance, that falls under capital. 14% of Haldane's budget for 1516 is called the capital component. That is the salaries and benefits of custodial and maintenance staff, debt service, bus purchases, and utilities. And that -- oh, I skipped a little bit. That's Slide 9 of the presentation. Backing up to Slide 8, because I went a little bit out of order, are program costs. That's the salaries and benefits of all teachers and support staff, textbooks, instructional materials, equipment, athletics, BOSI's programs, special education services, and transportation, not including bus services. Also allocated to each of those categories are employee benefits for each component. The -- out of the $22,879,325 budget, $2,592,63 is makes up the 11% for the administrative component. $17,097,072 is the 75% for program expenditures, and $3,272,990 make up that 14% for the capital component of the budget. Now, if anyone is still awake after that, because that is the information that I, you know, need to share with you as far as presenting our budget in the three component parts. The rest of this document, after the budget information, the detail and the different components, there is the property tax report card and the administrative salary report. We have an exemption impact sheets that tells you how much of the property is exempt in Duchess and Putnam County for Haldane. And then the rest of it is the school report card for 1314. And that takes up half of this document, but it is required that we make everyone aware with this budget document. The state mandates what's included in this document. This isn't just something that we thought you'd like to know. This is something that we're required to let you know. So that's it as far as the budget document goes. Slide 10 of the presentation is reminding everyone of the vehicle proposition that on the ballot will be a proposition for $180,000. That's $110,000 for one big bus, $45,000 for one van, $25,000 for a maintenance vehicle. And that expenditure, if passed, will be funded through a bond anticipation note. That's a note that's paid off over five years, beginning in 1617, when other debt that's in the budget falls off, so that the impact is lessened with these bus purchases. Slide 11 on the presentation describes Proposition 3, which is the library proposition. Slide 12 lets you know that the complete budget document may be viewed at all school buildings, the district office, the local library, and on the school website. And 13 of 13 tells you that your vote counts. So May 19, 2015 are the board elections and budget vote. And that concludes my riveting presentation.
That was very great.
Thanks.
So we will also post this PowerPoint on the front page of our website tomorrow, so if you'd like to take a look at it and see the particulars, that will be available to you. And again, we're sorry, but we had a couple power outages tonight, and the Wi-Fi is down, and we're just not able to do what we normally do technologically this evening.
Are there any questions from the board about the budget or from the public about the budget? Yes, Mr. Jim Julius.
Is it safe to say that the tax levy increase is the exact same as the projected tax rate increase? They both show 2.72.
At this time, yes. That's what I'm projecting because...
Does that make it a little easier?
Right. Well, it's always a hope that the assessment will go up and that projected tax rate increase will go down. But right now, I keep everything flat as far as the projection goes, and it always...
Right. And the equalization rates won't be out until late, middle to late August?
Until the middle of summer.
And so at that point, we'll know what the tax rate is for all the jurisdictions.
Did you want to make sure? Because it was ironic that they're both the exact same number. So, thank you.
Okay, great.
Well, I have a question, Jim. Actually, I have a comment and a question. I'll make my comment first. So I'm looking now back at the parameters that we set when we kicked this off. Stay within the tax gap, reduce, which we've done, reduce appropriated fund balance amount, which we've also done. Fund depleted reserves. We've looked very carefully at our reserves, and we've established that we're in a good place as far as reserve funds go. Continue staff development in relation to strategic plan. We're definitely doing that. Keeping pace with technology, I believe we're doing that, too. And expanding and improving website communication. And I'm hopeful that we'll be doing that also.
Just not tonight.
Right. The only other item is the opting out of the possible opting out of the TRS pension smoothing plan. So we need to revisit that soon.
We'll revisit that. There's a lot of information that goes in that. It's not just, I think, a casual conversation during budget time. That's a whole nother set of parameters to look at. And we have till June 30 of 2016, actually, to opt out for the 1516 school year. So I'd like to be able to give you the information in a detailed manner to focus on that.
Okay. The one specific question I had on the bus, are we getting diesel or propane?
That would be diesel. We do like the propane, and of course, it's reducing our carbon footprint, and the repairs on it have proved to be better. Without having an onsite filling station for the propane, it will prove very challenging, and we might not have all the buses at our disposal when we need them.
Okay.
Getting fuel is posing to be a little bit of a challenge for us. Okay, I think we're good. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, and I'll start where Peter just left off. And one of the things you were talking about is the website development and design. And within the technology positions that we have, those, the responsibilities, if they are approved by the voters, will be moving into that. So hopefully, we'll see a redeveloped website. But the part that we like most about it is that our students will be part of the redevelopment and the design process next year. So that's a real positive. The next is an update on test refusals. As you know, we finished the math exam last week, and after the week of the ELA and the week of the math exam, we had similar numbers of students that opted out. We did have some students that opted out of the ELA that actually took the math exam, and we had some students that took the ELA exam that opted out of the math exam. So the numbers were pretty similar, although there was some variation in it. Across the state, it appears that there were about 200,000 students that actually opted out statewide. And there is some new legislation that was just put on the floor of the Senate and probably also the Assembly in the very near future that's kind -- that thwarts or manages the tone of some of the requirements that came with the budget. And so you should be seeing some information about that. And it's a bipartisan bill that was placed on the Senate floor today, and it's going to push off a number of the things that were required related to the budget. So we'll see how that works out.
What was the numbers? Did we -- did you say the numbers?
Altogether?
Yeah.
Up for ours?
Do you have an idea?
We were a little under 16% for the ELA, and we were at 17% for the math. So again, very similar, but the names were different in both situations. Okay, a couple other things. Friday, May 22, we just want to remind you that school is now in session, and originally it was on the calendar, but that is a snow makeup day, so we are in session. And some other important information, May 26 is going to be the presentation to the Board of Education of the Haldane Strategic Plan. Last week, we had our final strategic planning meeting, and our fourth and final essential question was answered by all five subcommittees. And so we'll be looking at presenting the strategic plan on the 26th, and then the plan will come up for vote with the Board of Education on June 16. So just some important things to remember.
Okay, good. Can we add to those important meeting dates the Meet the Candidates event, which is sponsored by the PTA, which is on Wednesday, May 12, at 7:00 PM? So next Wednesday is the Meet the Candidates night for the Board of Trustees. May 13. May 13. Thank you.
That's in the auditorium.
Wednesday, May 13. In the auditorium. 7:00 PM. So that's an opportunity to hear from the candidates. There are six candidates for three seats, and it's an opportunity to hear from them and hear about the -- what they have to say on important issues. So if you can attend. Okay, good. Going into the committee minutes, the safety committee minutes were shared with us. Any questions or comments about those? Okay. Then we're gonna -- is there any communication from the public? Yeah, no. Okay. There's no correspondence that I know of. So we're moving into the consent agenda. So the consent agenda for the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on April 21, 2015. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial, may I have a motion?
Motion.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Good. And then is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. And so now we're moving into unfinished business. Dr. Bowers, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. I'm just flipping through till I get there.
Where's your finger? Your finger scroll.
Yeah, what page are we on? 13. Okay.
Communities that Care Coalition and then Monolith Solar.
Yeah, I'm not finding that page. May I use yours for the time being? Okay. We have the Communities that Care Coalition. We had a coalition meeting last week where we had 25 representatives from the Haldane community. I think five, six of us from the high school, middle school, and the K-12 community, as well as slightly under 20 students, 20 adults that were trained in Narcan use. And unfortunately, we are -- we had to put that on the agenda. We wish it weren't, but we are prepared in case there's ever a situation. So a couple of additional bits of information. Peter asked for an update as far as Monolith Solar goes, and I have been back and forth with Tim Carr. For those of you who may not be up to date, Monolith Solar is the company that we contracted with for our solar panels. We do have the approval from the State Education Department. But simultaneously, when the approval came, we also had a discussion on whether or not we should be moving some of the solar panels that were to be placed on the roof to a solar field. And Monolith found out that that was certainly a possibility, but it had to actually be housed within the Haldane School District. So right now, we are in discussion about the potential of them buying part of the land that we have on the market. And it's going -- what we're looking at is the potential of having a parcel that has -- it's about a two to three-acre parcel that includes James Pond. We have to see what the direction is that you'd like to go, but we could take the entire property, subdivide it, and then subdivide the James Pond piece to keep half of the James Pond piece as our school's laboratory for outdoor education, and the other piece would be the solar farm. The Monolith Solar is interested in buying about an acre and a half parcel of that, about three-acre parcel. And we would still have a right of way if that were the case. If that is a direction that you would like to see us go, we're going to have to get an assessment on the cost of that acre and a half as opposed to the three-acre parcel, and we will have an assessment done, and we can determine if they feel it's within their price range. So you need to give me guidance on how you'd like to see that happen or if you would like to see that happen. The other option is we can simply just go with the original plan and put the solar panels on the roof. In the presentation, we did learn that we would actually receive more money in a -- by use of the solar farm than we would with the panels on the roof. And with the solar farm, we'd also be able to modify the direction of the panels and the tilt so we could get maximum usage out of our solar panels. So that's where we are right now. So that came -- that information did come in today.
Have they looked at the -- like, they think it's acceptable, assuming the price is right, that they can mount their panels and get them out of sunlight that they need and all that?
Well, they've looked at the land. They have the topographic map. They also have the survey of the property. What they're talking about, one of the things that they had to find, if we had a -- I want to make sure that I do this right, a two-phase or a three-phase utility access in the region. And we have the three-phase, which is necessary in order for that to happen. But now what they would have to do is have utility interconnection appro- a two-phase or a three-phase utility access in the region. And we have the three-phase, which is necessary in order for that to happen. But now what they would have to do is have utility interconnection approval, passing of Phase One environmental test, and then municipal approval. So there would be three things that would still have to happen. They would also have to get a DEC permit for taking the trees that are on the property down. So that, those are the places that they would go next if we went ahead and gave them the okay.
And I don't remember, do you guys remember what they said about once they find the land? Like, how long it then takes for it to be, like, in motion?
No, they were pretty vague on that. I don't think they had any timeline.
Definitely timeframes, yeah.
It would slow it down, for sure.
I mean, I think if we could do it, that'd be great. I mean, the only other thing, you know, we might want to think about is, if we did do that, and we sold the other parcel, or whatever's left, as a building lot, per se, does that decrease the value of that? Because now you got a solar farm in your backyard. I mean, I don't know, maybe for some people that increases it, I don't, I don't know, but.
Well, based on where the property would be, from one, it would be very visible, and from, there are actually two parcels. So from one of the parcels, it would be directly next to it at the base as you're moving up the road. And the other one, it would be very difficult to see. So that would, it may.
And is there any concern along those lines? So we had allocated that that whole property was going to be sold for 400 and something, 425? And that that money was to go to finish paying for the?
The field.
The field. So if we take these, if we take these parcels and keep them for James Pond for the school, and the other gets sold, like, does it, does it change the amount of money? I guess is what I'm asking. Like, does it increase the amount of money that we can make on that property? Or does it end up decreasing it?
It would probably decrease it. That would be, that's a consideration as well.
Not that we've come up with 425 for that property anyways. Nobody's offered it to us necessarily, but that was what we were expecting for it.
Well, I'm not sure that it would necessarily decrease the value, the total value of that property. I mean, if it is going to, then we can't do it, because we have to get at least 425 for that whole, for that whole 10 acre site.
We would have to get the?
But in the, in the assessment of that parcel, the value 425, really none of it is assigned to that portion that's being considered.
Right, that's true. So we would have to reappraise the land. Right now, there was an appraisal for one piece of property for a large parcel at 425.
My fear is that this is going to take a long time. Well, that's one of my, one of my concerns. So if I understand correctly, based on some information that you'd shared with us earlier, the idea is that the panels, if we did this, you clear the trees, and the panels are then placed on a steel structure that you can park underneath? Is that still?
Well, that, that was one of the discussions. The problem with that, and it's not done in this region due to snow loads, for the most part. So they are starting to get the technology that will allow for that to happen. And if that does happen, that was one of the suggestions. And to have a 15-foot trellis that would allow the panels to be up on top and then potentially park underneath it.
Well, if that's, so that's not an option then?
No, it does, it still may be, but.
I mean, it seems, it seems kind of a little too hopeful to think that they might buy the piece of land for us, they might build a structure that, put the solar panels on it, and then let us park underneath it. Of course, it would be wonderful if they did, but realistically, it doesn't seem like a very likely scenario.
If we went, if that was the direction that we could go based on the technology, and they would have to see what was available, it would be reflected in the purchase price, I'm sure. So I think that's all part of that.
Liability-wise, even.
Would they even buy it? Why wouldn't they just, why would they buy it?
Well, the reason, actually, that was a conversation that we had, and they would have less SED oversight with the purchase of the property than if they did it on our land. So that was part of it.
And if they purchased, I mean, if they purchased that property and put up a solar farm, it doesn't have to be just panels that are serviced and housing. They could put other panels there and make money off other people, right? I mean, it's not just dedicated to us, per se.
Well, we would actually lease the land back. And I think that what he was here is saying that what normally happens is you lease the land for a dollar a year. And so that was also part of the conversation.
But, I mean, let's say we needed 50, if we needed 50 solar panels for what Haldane needed, just throwing a number out there, but they could fit 200, and they put 200 up. Those other 150, they could sell that power to somebody else, right?
That may.
Yeah, I mean, they don't have to.
This is their farm, and that we're just using a portion of it.
Right, it just happens to be in our district, so we can use it.
Right.
So I mean, that might be a reason to, if they can make more money, that's always a reason to do it.
Yeah, and it's obviously lucrative for the company, or else they wouldn't be asking or pushing the idea. So I guess what we have to decide is, do we want to just continue on with what was originally planned and just go ahead and hopefully get it done this summer so it can start servicing us next year? Or do you want to consider some of the other options? I don't think there's necessarily a recommendation being made. I think there's, there are options here, and we have to decide which one we would like to do.
And we could do both of them.
Well, I'll, I'll just say that I would, I would favor sticking with the original plan, going with the rooftop installation. The reason being that I don't want to see us clearing one and a half acres of woodland up there when we have perfectly serviceable, unused roofs right above us. I really, I know that the concern was, the roofs are new. If we have workers up there, there's a possibility that they may damage them. But really, we work with a reputable company who hire trained employees, and they carry liability insurance. And we've already had a conversation with the roofing manufacturer to ensure that the existing roofing warranty would remain in effect. The installer would be responsible for any damage. So I really don't see any particular risk there. So my personal feeling is, put the panels on the roof and leave the woodland the way it is. It also keeps open the option for using that area for parking, which is something that we've discussed in the past.
And it's actually on the survey.
Yeah, so putting a solar field there would eliminate that option for us. So in my mind, everything seems to point to the roofs being the right place to do this. In terms of the cost benefit of the remote net metering solution, that's not altogether clear that there's a benefit there. In year one, there was, the point is that the credit you receive through net metering is reevaluated every year, and it's going to be somewhere, so we'll be paying somewhere between 10 and 35% less than what we'll pay Central Hudson for the way we buy electricity currently. Whereas the rooftop work, it's 25, every year, 25% below Central Hudson. So net metering, it goes somewhere between 10 and 35, so chances are.
So it could be a benefit, or it could not be.
It could be, or it could not be, or chances are, it's probably not much different.
There's also another complicating factor, just so we'll let you know. We're just sharing everything with you at this point. But on Onboard Magazine, Anne was reading an article about the state and the state having specific companies that are now coming, and they're being subsidized by the state to put in the solar panels. So is there anything you'd like to share about that?
No, just that by the end of this month, they were going to name, they were going to name companies and plans for doing this statewide. So I don't know, maybe, maybe it being stalled is going to be part, you know, a benefit to us. But we don't really have any information, except it is out there, and districts are all hopping on board to it.
And I did contact Monolith to see if they were one of the companies that was going to be named, and they said that they had been contacted, but they didn't have much more than that to say.
And there was an educational component that we discussed as well, where one of the things that you had said, Peter, was that, oh, it's so nice to have it on the roof, because then you see it, the community sees it. It is a very visible step in the green direction for us, for the students, for the community. But I don't think there's any getting up on the roof for the students. And there was certainly, that was appealing about having the farm, where they could really interact with it. I don't know how you interact with it, but they could, they could interact with it, and they could, they could walk around it, and they could see it. Like, to me, that sounded like a benefit of having the farm.
Well, you'll certainly get a good view from, from the high school, looking down at the main building. From up on the hill there, you get a pretty clear view of the rooftop, although the panels will actually be facing the other way, so you'll, you'll see the back of them.
So do we need to, I mean, how does this proceed? Do we need to make a decision about how the group feels about this? Do we want to think about it? I mean, we need to decide, are we going to move forward with the roof panels as, as planned? And if so, we can say, let's do it, put it in motion, maybe get it done this summer. Then we need to say, do we want to investigate the farm idea? And do we want to do that in addition to the roof panel project, or instead of?
Right, and it would require that we start investing some money for the appraisal and for the subdivision. So I think that's why I'm asking the direction you'd like to see us go, because if we're not going to do it that way, then there's really no reason to be paying the values or the prices for what we're going to be looking at.
And how much money are we talking about?
Well, we recently had an appraisal done on another parcel of land that was about $750 for the appraisal. So, and it's not a huge amount, but it certainly is money that we could use for something else. So if it's not, if it's really not of interest, we would do the appraisal first, and then we would look at the subdivision, and I'm not sure how much that would cost, or the time it would take for that to occur, so.
Regarding these other, this new program that, that we've heard about, we're, I mean, we're under contract with, with Monolith at this point. And I don't, I don't think we have an out clause. So I think we're obligated to do business with these people, unless they decide that they don't want to do business with us.
No, I'm not sure if they have necessarily a way of walking away from it right now either. But it would be nice if there was some additional support that we could get through the state if Monolith was named. And I think that was the hope, so then. But we don't know that that's going to happen.
Right.
I think we could try and push back on them too, for the remote net metering, and say, well, why can't you give us, don't worry about going up to 35, just give us the flat 25, like you're going to do with the roof-mounted panels for the, you know, whatever the time period is. Now, they probably don't want to do that, because then they don't make as much money when it's less than 25%. So, but.
But we're not asking for the 10 ever.
Right, we're not, we're not asking to go up to 35 ever. Not that they might ever go to 35 anyway, but say, just give us the same deal you're going to give us with the roof-mounted.
I mean, maybe we all just need to think, think it through?
I think we do.
And see which direction you want to go in, because it feels like there's a lot of, a lot of options.
Yeah, but we are, be reasonable to keep this on a short timeline. The key question, I think, is, if we are to get the rooftop installation done this summer, when do we need to decide? Because they're going to need some lead time to have panels available, to have technicians available to do it. That's kind of one of the key questions that we need to get an answer from. And I've been, they, they haven't been as responsive as they might be. So that certainly is a factor for us to consider. I mean, I had made a request for the drawings, the engineering drawings, to show what, exactly where the panels would be placed, and what the, what's the finished aesthetic would be like. I don't know if we've had, if we've received that back from them yet.
And I did have the conversation with them, that we have to come to a decision. And, you know, part of it is, I was saying, is there an interest, you know, as far as moving forward? So they're still asking for information. They have not yet said there's, there's a definite interest there either. They're saying a lot of things that are happening. So simultaneously, I said, you know, you need to get us on your schedule, because at this point, if we're going to, if we are going to go the roof route, then we need to get on and make sure it happens this summer.
So then, do we feel like we should make a decision on this by our next meeting? If we're not really prepared to make one right this moment?
Yeah.
If we can, I mean, if we can get word back from them, I don't know, you know, how likely that is of when, you know, if we're not on the schedule already, when do they need us to commit to get on that schedule?
Right.
But yeah, I'm sure it's probably the sooner the better, because they want to know what their schedule's going to be for the summer.
Do we feel like we need to do it before next meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
No, I, no, I'm just saying, if they came back and said, hey, you know, we can get you on, tell us by mid-June. I don't think they're going to say that, but, you know, that would give us a lot, there'd be a lot of pressure to make a decision if they did say that.
Okay. Or the other thing is, I could say, please just put, put this on your schedule, and then we'll continue to explore the other. And if that's the direction we go, we'll just pull off, put ourselves off the schedule, which may be the best way of doing it, so we make sure that we're already on. And then the ball is in their court to get whatever information we need and to convince us it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
So that sounds like we're all comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then I will make the call tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, the other thing that I wanted to share, and it's not. It's not necessarily on this, but it's also very timely. We are now getting information from the state regarding the Smart Schools Bond Act. So we are at the point that we have to file an application. So we're, we get in the, the first wave of schools that are moving in that direction. And then we would begin to create the plan that we would have to spend the funds. We do have some specifics as far as the types of uses that we can have, so we have something to actually go on. And most of it is hardware or structure. It's not, there's really four areas, and it's the areas that we'd be looking to go anyway. So we're looking at hardware, we're looking at the infrastructure, and probably that's, that's what will be seen in our plan. So once we've heard back, when we've filed the application saying, yes, the Haldane Central School District would like to use the funds, and then we go through the process, we'll have to get a committee together, and we'll know more about that. So that is, it's probably not going to occur in the 1516 year. It's going to be the 1617 school year, but at least things are moving forward, yeah.
I'd completely forgotten about that.
Actually, I saw something about that just the other day. And I think I read that they're accepting requests from schools starting in June of this year.
Well, the applications.
The applications, yeah.
Yes, that's the first stage, and then that gets you into the.
But you, but it's not, but that is not a deadline. That's just when they start. And we really have as long as it takes us to submit the application for the money that's being allocated to us, which is about 240-some thousand dollars.
Well, the, the, that's the first step. The second step is to actually create the plan. So you can submit the application without having the plan.
Okay.
And so that's.
So we'll get the application in?
We'll get the application, and then we'll get the committee together and start deciding what we're going to spend our money on.
Good.
Okay, moving into the Board of Education succession. So we talked about this last meeting, and this meeting, we're just solidifying how we feel about it. We talked about two issues. One is, in the interim between the election and July 1st, I'll be operating as, doing the president duties. Do we want to have a backup person in case I'm unable to be here? So kind of like a backup vice president. I think it's a good idea. Peter has said he's willing and able, so I'm kind of comfortable.
Certainly, somebody should do it.
I'm comfortable with Peter being the backup VP if everybody else is.
I mean, can we even, instead of saying backup VP, can, can you just, you can't, just call him VP? Okay, so there you go.
You can't call me the president. I'm, I'm still the vice president, even though I'm acting as president for those few weeks. He is, he'll be, he's, yeah. So it's kind of an unofficial, just so we know as a, as a group, if I'm unable to be here, Peter can step in, and I would communicate. It's just for like three meetings or something. Okay, so that's good, so thank you.
You know, so I would have a map for the public, showing where it is, where it's going to be, how it's located with James Pond, everything with that, because that's going to be a tough sell to some people, possibly. I wouldn't just go down as board, I'd really get that, I'd have a picture of some sort, so people could see where it's going, where it's going to be located on that map.
We have the, we have a survey that will show it.
Yeah, because when I was still on the board, we provided, we had color coded, which actually helped, remember Peter, we had to color code it, which really helped a lot of people decipher where the. decipher where the land could be broken apart.
Yep.
It would be very helpful to know where that field would be.
I have them, I have those maps in my office.
And the other key part is, because that money has to be, as we all know, that four hundred thousand plus has to go towards that field, otherwise we didn't keep our end of the bargain. So that was it.
Yeah, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, thank you.
Just so you know, I'm rolling.
Great. I'm sorry, it's like glow in the dark. Something on.
Bright as a...
Okay. So any, any other communication from the public, from the board? Be good. Okay, moving into new business, CSE, CPSC recommendations, Ms. Julia.
Okay.
Can you see?
Yes, I didn't keep using my iPad as a, as a lamp. The recommended action is that the board approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education as indicated.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I do.
Okay, number two is an approval of a sports merger agreement between Haldane School District and Hendrick Hudson School District for varsity ice hockey for the 2015, 2016 school year. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the sports merger agreement between the Haldane Central School District and the Hendrick Hudson Central School District for varsity ice hockey for the 2015, 16 school year and authorizes the board vice president, superintendent, high school principal, and athletic director to sign this agreement on behalf of the district.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
We've done this, this year. Has that, yeah? It's gone well?
Yeah, yeah, due participation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number three.
Okay. This is an approval of a resolution related to employee number sixty-five, sixty-five. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the resolution dated May fifth, 2015, related to employee number sixty-five, sixty-five.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Okay, so we're going into the establishment of the annual reorganization meeting. It's suggested that we do have one more.
Yeah, I've got, yeah, so I have number four.
Approval of the resol, to extend the probationary period.
Yeah, to extend the probationary period of Ms. Amy Hopkins, foreign language teacher. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution resolved that the Board of Education does hereby extend the probationary period of Ms. Amy Hopkins in the foreign language tenure area from September one, 2015 to January eight, 2016, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
No, but I would like to just put on the record that she was out for maternity leave and that's why we're going to extend the probationary period.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. So we're establishing the date of the annual reorganization meeting. The suggested date is the first Tuesday in July, which is Tuesday, July seventh, 2015. Is there any known conflicts by, I guess, I'm talking to Peter and Kevin. John, I'm talking to the count right now.
We don't have much leeway on this one anyway.
No.
We're pretty much obligated to go with the first Tuesday of July.
I think it has to be done within like the first week.
Well, they're right, it'll have to be the first Tuesday, just the first ten days, right?
Right, so it doesn't have to be the first Tuesday.
Yeah, no, July seventh works for me.
That we all get so far?
Yeah.
Great.
And the time, we'll set, we'll set that in. We, we've gone back and forth on various summers. Sometimes we do them earlier, like around five, five-thirty.
Yeah.
And last summer, we, we stuck at the seven o'clock time, so...
I think we need to keep it at the seven o'clock time for the working, working folks.
It certainly makes life a lot easier for me if we stick to seven.
Yes, good. And then we need to establish the August, 2015 business meeting.
Now, before we talk about doing it, we did talk about the first Tuesday of August, what the problem, the problem with that is that we may not have the information reports that we need in order to set the utilization rate at that point.
So we may wish to put it later. And I think they were saying the eighteenth, is that normally around the, the time period that we look at?
That sounds...
We usually do it, because I know for, because I know it's always during Regions Week and that's why, it's always in my head, it's always, that's why it's never a problem for me.
Typically around the eleventh or twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay.
But even if we did it following week, that would be better. Last year, we were still getting information and changes coming in from the assessor's office on the twelfth, and that's the date that we had the meeting. So the fourth, we, I don't think that we would have even all the information in from the assessor. The eighteenth would be fine, though.
So, right, so we're looking at the Tuesdays, the fourth is the first Tuesday, we're saying that's too early. The eleventh may still be too early, but the eighteenth, we're probably safe.
I suggest we hold off on this one until we know who's involved. A, we know who's involved, and B, I'm going to be taking some time off around that time. I just don't know when at this point.
And we could push it later to that, the week of the eleventh, if you want to do that too. So that's an option, but...
Right, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday.
Right.
Right, yeah.
But we can wait to the reorg, meeting to set that date.
Oh, sure.
Then we'll have everybody in place.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, and then I think that's the same kind of thought for the establishment of the board retreat. Like, it's in there, but we really need to wait till the other people are.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Bless you.
Thank you. All right, any communication from the public? I think if there's nothing else, we'll be convening it to executive session. So is there anything, anything else from anybody?
No.
No? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session, and that's for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual and for the purpose made confidential by matters of federal law, the Family Education Rights Privacy Act. No action is planned to be taken during the exec session. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we won't be coming back.